Call back to order the final leg of the budget hearings for the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Cerna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Mr. Gill.
The good news is, out of thousands of line items, I think we're down to about five.
Yes. So I'm going to go alphabetical with the questions you all asked. So the first one is animal care. So the memo that we handed you out this morning, on the backside, is a table I'm going to use. We have difficulty reconciling with all the other ones. I'm going to put that to the side. So if you have that memo in front of you, the first item is after-hours emergency veterinarian contract services.
It's in my trash here.
Uh-oh.
Oh, my goodness.
I got an extra copy with the right numbers on it.
Thank you. I had like four copies of it, so. Oh, there it is. Sorry.
Okay. So the first item, after-hours emergency veterinarian contract services. After the money from City of Oak Grove, it's a $54,000 total recommended, which is 14,000 short from this existing year. Then the second item, the Batmobile, it's 80,000. We're proposing restoring 20,000. It's 60,000 short from the current fiscal year. Cat spay neuter program, it's 48,000 short. And the last item, the community feral cat, there is no reduction to that after the proposal. So that's how surprised I'm to tell you those numbers reconcile.
Okay. I could ask Mr. Chair, though, because as I was doing the comparison to page six of 18, as I mentioned earlier, I could find the three first items, but I did not find that the cats being neutered, return to field, feral cats program has a line item reduction, unless it's under some other title, it doesn't show on that page. And so I see the restoration of $70,000, and yet I don't see, and that was my question earlier, maybe Dave can come up and explain. I mean, I don't see.
I think Brett has.
Oh, okay.
I think we can explain that.
Okay.
So what's going on there is that that was not identified as a reduction. You'll recall that that was a program that had been, for many years, funded out of, basically, revenue was provided by donations.
Mm-hmm.
And every year it was identified as a growth issue, a one-year growth issue because of the nature of the donations. This year, when the donations went away, it was eliminated, not in the base. It was not eliminated as a growth, because it was one time. As we looked at the additional revenue, the department indicated that this was a priority for them to continue, and so that's why that appears there.
Okay. So that's useful to know, because I've sat here all day trying to figure this out, and what it does, then, it will clarify for what I will offer as a suggestion here, because I'm interested in some restorations. But when I saw that, coming out of the $182,000, I'm thinking, that's well and fine, but I didn't see it as being a, it wasn't showing it was a cut. So I was looking to, because there are a couple of things I'd like to at least put on the docket here for restoration within the framework of the reductions that were shown on page six of 18. So, and I can offer those numbers whenever we get to that point, but.
I think we are at that point. I mean, as we're going through them.
Okay. All right. Well, I would just turn us to page six of 18, but, and if you want to use this sheet, on the community spay neuter, I'm going to be seeking full restoration to the $110,000. I find the arguments compelling and very, very important. And as it relates to care for the animals, both in shelter but also in after-hours, and I don't know whether Dave can shed any light on this, but when I hear that we have 1,000 cats alone that are in foster, and I know that within our shelter system, we have a couple of hundred dogs, that support's very, very important, and yet that was eliminated in the budget reductions. And those medical funds, which provide support for the fosters, we have twice as many animals out in foster as we do in shelter, and so it's a key piece. It wasn't identified here, because obviously that $70,000 picked up the feral cat program. So I would be seeking a restoration of the foster program medical funds at 30,000.
In addition to the 48?
Yeah, in addition to the 48.
What was the next item you had?
It would be, again, page of six of 18, next to the last item in that column in that chart, would be the foster program medical funds.
And that is?
30,000.
30,000. And then restoration, as you noted, Mr. Gill, for the after-hours emergency veterinary contract services. I think that's key. That's keeping animals alive if they're injured seriously, or we have other things that need to be attended to. And again, all these things affect certainly live release rate, in addition, obviously, the good work that goes on in the shelter. And then for the Batmobile, I guess, just some explanation, 20,000 is better than zero, but it's only a quarter of 80, so what is that bias? There's no frame of reference relative to, and that goes to all the supervisor districts, to some of the underserved neighborhoods, for vaccination clinics, for, I don't know how much spay neuter services we're providing in neighborhoods, but, so again, Dave, what does that mean? Because this is not just a District Five or District Three. It goes to all five districts, so.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and board members. Dave Dickinson with Sacramento County Animal Care. The community outreach program, the Batmobile, does have a significant cut to it, down to 20,000. That money is only going to be spent on supplies. That whole program, for the last year, has been manned by volunteers. There's no staff time involved, except for our volunteer coordinator, who heads up the program. We did have about 35,000, 40,000 left over from last year's budget that we didn't use. The vehicle is put out into the community once a month, well, 10 months out of the year, basically, and we're hoping with the 20,000 will give us enough supplies, vaccines, and stuff to continue the program.
To do it once a month?
It could use, pardon me?
To do it once a month?
Yes.
For 10 months?
To continue the program as it is. 20,000 is probably a bit of a stretch, but as I understand it, there hasn't been any funding available compared to the other programs. The other programs are in-house programs, after-hours emergency veterinary care, and at the bottom there, the return-to-field program. Those have a direct effect on our live release rate, which is what we're trying to achieve at the shelter each year, up close to 90 percent. Without funding those, we would fall short of our goals. The community animals that we serve out in the community, which are the $110,000 there in the Batmobile program, 80,000, those animals are not considered shelter animals. They don't have a direct reflection on the live release rate. They are very important to the community members, though. I understand that. But my priority this year was to make sure that the in-house programs were fully funded or as close to it as possible.
Dave, so, looking at this short list that was on the back of the memo, you have two in-house and then two community, either the community outreach and/or the community spay neuter. Are there any other things that were on the list, again, I'm working off the budget page here, that, there were a number of things, and some of them included positions, different vacancies and so forth. Are there any other things that relates to that live release rate, that 90 percent goal, that, whether they're in-house or outside, that would have a dramatic effect? Because these aren't large numbers by comparison, so.
No, there's nothing else in our budget that needs to be addressed, other than the emergency veterinary contract, which were about $14,000 short from last year. We've spent about $62,000 of the 68,000 this year, and we've got a few weeks to go. I'm confident that we'll come in right at the 68.
Okay. So if you had $68,000, that would be a $14,000 addition that was being recommended on this sheet?
Right. We also do have TEAM, the nonprofit that we work with, and we had a big day of giving. We raised another $38,000, which we do use at off-site vets for emergency care and specialty surgery, so I was hoping to use some of that as well to bridge the gap of that 14,000.
Okay. And what about the foster program medical funds? I raised that a moment ago. That's 30,000.
Yeah, that $30,000 was given to us last year, I believe, for the first time, and we were never able to secure a contract with a veterinarian hospital that was willing to enter into that. There were a lot of concerns about who was going to authorize a pet's treatment in the middle of the night. Just nobody was really interested. The one veterinary clinic that we deal with the most is a 24-hour emergency vet clinic, and they didn't want to take on the added responsibility of that group of animals.
Okay. So we never had a contract for that?
We never had a contract for that.
All right. So maybe I can make this as simple on my suggestion, that I would suggest that we, that we.
Don, are you going to be working off this sheet?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, because the one I mentioned before, Susan, it sounds like there wasn't a contract, so it may negate that, that we add $14,000 in addition to the 54s. I would put that at 68,000.
Wait, wait, wait.
The first.
Okay.
Yeah, after-hours emergency veterinary.
So you want to add 14 to the 54?
Yes, yes, okay. And rather than just 20,000, I would suggest we have $30,000 for the Batmobile. That gives you some leeway to do that. Sounds like you used about 35,000 this year. Okay. So I would add $10,000 to that one. And then for cat spay neuter, rather than 62,000, have that at 110,000. So we add 48 there.
On that one, if I might add some information to that particular program, in this current fiscal year, we gave 65,000 to the SPCA and 45,000 to CSN, the clinic next to us. However, CSN does not have a program similar to the SPCA, like they have on feral cat Sundays. The CSN clinic uses those funds sparingly for only in-need hardship cases. They currently have about $35,000 left of this year's money that they can carry over into next year as well.
Could SPCA use more? So why don't we just put that number in there?
Because that money's already been given to CSN for their program.
Right. So what are you suggesting? You suggesting that we only program $65,000 in?
Well, if the money was available, you could probably bump it up maybe at 20,000, and I would say give the SPCA the lion's share of that and have some leftover for CSN for the springtime of next year.
I think we can work that detail out. What I'm hearing is you would like to restore this back to 110,000.
Yes, I would.
And how we work the detail, Dave, we work that out.
All right. Let's do that again. Okay. And then the $70,000 that you show on the sheet here for the return-to-field.
Yeah, and that's already programmed.
Right, programmed. Okay. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Total of 134.
Adding back in?
So it's 48,000.
Right.
It stays the same. 10,000 for the Batmobile, and after one, it's another 14,000 for a grand total of 62,000.
Got it.
On top of the 182.
Yeah, no, the 182 is already.
Right, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, how much was that?
I'm sorry, 72. I'm being corrected.
Total of 72 additional dollars.
For animal care at this point.
For those three programs.
Yes.
182 plus?
182 plus another 72.
Right.
72. So that's the new money.
That's the new number. So the second question that we had was APS baseline positions. In speaking with Supervisor Natoli and with Michelle, what we will propose is having six unfunded positions in APS. And Michelle, do you want to go over the six positions?
Briefly. So if I'm understanding correctly, the five, there are five in APS, and that's a family service worker, two public health nurses, an office assistant, and then a manager, and then one in public guardian, and that is a social worker position.
And if I might add, because Mr. Gill and I talked briefly during the break on this, is that you explained about the public health nurses, that those may not be necessary because of utilization and some other access improvements. I would suggest that if we retained, you know, the total of five, maybe you keep a couple in IAGHS. It sounded like you want some flexibility, three in APS and one in public guardian conservator, and that still gets to six, right?
Okay. So three, two, and one.
Yep.
Okay.
And that gives you some flexibility.
Six restored compared to the 15.
But no funding. These are unfunded positions as funding comes. Yeah, vacancy. As funding comes in.
And you'll come back in September, take a look at it, see what we've got in the Care Plus program in particular.
Okay.
So what category was that? Was that healthy partners?
It's APS.
APS.
APS baseline. Thank you, Michelle. Third item that the board wanted to discuss is CalFresh. And Ms. Wagstaff?
Thanks, Mr. Gill. So the question here, members of the board, is really whether or not to backfill the loss of state and federal funding. That was the reason for this reduction. It wasn't a question of the value of these organizations, it was simply that. So when we looked at that question, and in Brett's presentation this morning, we talked about the question of backfilling. You heard that DHA does outreach. You heard that the state does outreach. We've had a large volume of clients come in to respond to that outreach for the SSI, new eligibility for food stamps. Our, what we call our penetration rate in CalFresh is 83 percent.
Participation rate.
It's the same. In other words, of those who could be.
Yeah.
In a program, we are at 83 percent. That's one of the top participation rates in the whole state. There's only eight counties that exceed 80 percent. We're one of them.
That's because we have good outreach and good services for our workers.
If I may, if I may, okay? So when we considered the priorities here, you would have to redirect funding from somewhere else to cover these contracts. Not an easy decision, not an easy decision for us either. We considered all those things and landed where we did. And so that's what's before you on this.
We can use fund balance?
Yeah, for all the stuff we're discussing, that's where we're going to go, so.
300,000.
But why would we pay for money, pay for something that the feds and the state are already doing?
Well, they pulled the money.
Save our money.
They pulled the money, so we had to cancel the contract. I mean, propose to cancel the contract.
So what, I believe, when we had the earlier discussion, Mr. Wagstaff, I believe you chimed in a bit about the likelihood or not that the state may reconstitute some assistance on this front.
I don't think it was in this area, was it? No, I don't, Supervisor, I'm sorry, I don't think it was in this area.
Let me rephrase it. So we have no understanding of what the state or the feds would do anytime soon about reconstituting funding for this particular use?
I know of no effort in that one.
They have not indicated that there's any revenue coming back. Of course, we'll keep monitoring it with the state budget and the federal budget, but at this moment, they have not indicated.
Is every, and I see Ann wants to come to the podium. While she's doing that, is there, is every other of the 57 counties in the state grappling with the same thing?
Well, the question of participation rate or penetration rate has been a statewide issue for a long time in California.
No, in terms of facing the contract reductions.
Correct. If they have same kind of reductions coming, they will be grappling with same issue.
All counties received a reduction in their CalFresh allocation as a result of declining caseloads. We did receive some one-time funds this year for the SSI cash-out population, and the counties, along with CWDA, is going to be working with the state to see if there's some ongoing way that they continue to add money for this SSI population. If that were the case, there might be some additional funding. It's not likely to happen this year.
So that would happen after June 30th of '20?
Well, it would probably be in the, if it's there, it would be in the governor's January budget or that may revise next year.
You're correct. It'll be July 1, 2020, before the money comes in.
Again, we hit on this amount last year. Again, I don't recall specifically how we got to the number, but any level of outreach, assuming that it would be sustainable funding for those that we'd ask to be our partner in doing that, you know, in light of, obviously, what it means that we're going to have to make some, if we choose to do that, you know, allocate the money to do it, I guess I would just, you know, put out there that if we had $200,000 available to contract for these services for the outreach, and we still, we're having to make that budget allocation. I don't know if 300,000 was a magic number. Obviously, you have four providers who have been, I think, have been good partners with the county in doing that outreach, and I think in light of the changes, 83 percent participation or penetration is great. If we could get closer to 100, versus, you know, obviously, DHA and folks are going to do, you know, do the ultimate determination of eligibility, but I think this work is very important, so.
That's why I asked the question I did of Ann earlier about whether or not any thought was given to going to two providers versus four, or a fraction equally spread across all four.
I think the issue that we were grappling with, this is one of those things with, when state and federal declines, caseloads go down, we start looking at making similar-type reductions. And as you asked Supervisor Cerna, that's what the other counties, we all face the same challenge when state and federal don't give us the money. If we put general fund in there, then it changes the equation for us.
Understood.
And I can add, from having worked in two other counties in California, that our policy there was similar to what our policy has been here, which is if there's reduction in federal funding, we don't backfill. That's basically a bottomless pit you can get yourself into if you start backfilling reductions in federal funding for what are essentially federal programs like CalFresh. As good as the program is, beneficial it is, it's basically a federal program. We even have no share of cost, for example, for the CalFresh at all. We just administer the program, and that, I think many counties would be reluctant to start backfilling that.
I totally get the dynamic of that. I understand that. If we don't, if this is left as-is unfunded, what kind of commitment can staff give us to maybe explore some innovative ways that don't represent any net county cost to enhance outreach or messaging? And I'm thinking, you know, don't be shy. I think very out-of-the-box, creative, I don't know what it would be, but I think the principle, regardless of who's doing it, the principle of getting the message out, doing it in multiple languages, everything that I think we all agree has been successful and accounts for the 83 percent is something that's important to us. So that in principle is, it's hard to relinquish that.
No, you have our commitment on that.
I'm going to offer one other suggestion here. We've talked today about bridge funding, and I get it about backfill, but that's still a local choice. It's choices we make, and you don't want to have that as a matter of policy to, you know, continue to backfill, because as you said, that's an endless pit, and I appreciate Brett's comments. Seeing to me here, though, that, you know, with this influx and the fact that what will happen is that in 20 days, basically, that outreach would cease, I guess I would offer a suggestion that, you know, maybe we fund this for six months and, you know, get an intensive effort, and then recognizing that it wasn't a permanent backfill, but I think it allows us to transition and hopefully, you know, again, working with our staff and with Ann's folks at DHA and with our partners to, you know, I think, you know, ramp it up for the period of time that would get us through the end of the year, and hopefully, you know, get the qualification rate up, and then, you know, then we'll, you know, at that point.
Supervisor, just one point, I don't think you, I just wanted to clarify, our outreach is not going to stop because of these contracts. So I just want to make that clarification. I know that that's not what you intended, but we're going to continue doing the outreach, being innovative, do what we need to do.
Supervisor Frost?
Don't we have some news on the horizon regarding other federal and state funding that might be coming to us that might augment some of these programs?
I'll have to look at Ann. Ann, is there?
No, not for, not for CalFresh. I mean, the CalFresh allocation is reduced, it was proposed to be reduced the last couple of years, and we successfully advocated with the state to let us continue so that we had time to make adjustments, and this year, they're like.
Did we make adjustments?
I mean. We did by reducing staff and holding vacancies in order to be prepared for this, yes.
I don't, I'm concerned about backfilling a federal program and setting ourselves up for future, you know, loss of funding. Those are, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Next item that the board had inquired about was code enforcement, and Mr. Penrose, can you discuss that item?
Yes, I can. Let's see, the proposed reduction is two code enforcement officers being reduced in this year's budget. To give you some context, we had 30 code enforcement officer positions that would take it down to 28, which is, under one calculation at least, about a 7 percent decrease in terms of the workforce available for that. And really, the impact that we've identified would, it would increase partially the caseloads for the officers and the response time for the zoning enforcement activities, which is, you know, one component of what the code folks do. We did spend some time looking at it and see it basically as a program reduction, so there would be some delays, as talked about here, but not, no elimination of any of the programs. So that's, it's something we can, we can work with. It is a scalable process, as you know. The board's been scaling that unit up and down over the past few years in terms of trying to be more responsive on various issues, so.
Could I, maybe, it says I was the one that asked on this, and maybe a suggestion that was similar to what we did in the adult services. You don't want to have two positions that are unfunded, but this is one of those, again, it has been a bit of a ping pong, and as we've tried to address quality of life issues throughout the county and, you know, charged our code enforcement officer with a whole host of, a range of activities in neighborhoods and in communities, it would seem to me that this might be one of those where, depending upon where we land, if we didn't totally delete them, that we have the ability, maybe with September look, to look to that. I guess I would just offer, too, that I understood just in recent days that, as it relates to some of the uses that may be of a nuisance nature, that if they establish themselves and we don't take certain types of enforcement action timely, that for consideration of compliance, they may get the, I've been using baseline a lot here today, but there may be some ability for them to argue that when it comes to environmental review, and so it may require us to be more assertive rather than less, and, you know, that concerns me from a standpoint of how we interface with the public, but it also concerns you from a standpoint of, you know, how are we going to task folks to do that? And so I only raise that as just being another element that, you know, that might be considered here. So I, Mr. Chair, if we weren't of the mind to restore funding, to maybe retain these positions and allow this board, without having to go through all the gyrations of continuing to add or delete, to, you know, see what fund might be available September or later in the year, and see what level of activity we have in some of our neighborhoods and such.
So you're suggesting keep the positions, and if funding comes, bring it back?
So here's what we're going to do. We're going to take these one at a time.
Okay.
And then the board, maker of the motion, but continue to keep track so that we're all working from the same page.
But I don't understand what Don said. Does he, are you saying put it off till September, or so leave it as-is?
Yeah, hold the positions but not delete them. Not, don't delete the positions.
Like a lot of protective services.
Yeah, right. Retain the positions.
You want to keep the positions.
But unfunded, yeah, at this point.
In code enforcement.
In code enforcement. And the reason why, Susan, that we did in September, we can come back, we're not, you know, because these are vacant positions that have the ability, rather than have to go to restoration.
I understand that, but we could also come back in September and restore the positions.
We can.
Which is what I think we ought to do, because, I mean, we call code enforcement as much as anyone.
Or are we going to restore them now?
Or what?
Or we can restore them now. Could restore them now.
I think part of our issue with that one is we don't know quite the workforce that you've, that you've indicated. I think we need some time to figure out how much of that is going to be added on us. So that isn't our list to look at. If we need to augment or do something else, we will be seeking that augmentation from the board.
Okay. Well, I would just say, maybe to what Susan said, that it doesn't have a budgetary impact if we leave them unfunded for now, and maybe in September, keep some focus. You could tell us more about where we're at, and obviously, we're going to learn more about budget from the standpoint of, you know, some of the workload assignments and, you know, the issue I.
Enhancement of the 3-1-1 system. That's all documented in the, on page nine, 9 of 13 of the CEO's letter to the board, in fact, under Community Livability Initiatives. So in light of what's explained here, I think that's a wise way to go.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. Let's see, then we transition to healthy partners. Dr. Bealson's going to come in. You have some detail behind it. One of the things that I wanted to just, as the board's deliberating, there's a $500,000 reduction that we have proposed because there's a million dollar savings. But I wanted to let the board know, both Dr. Bealson, Mr. Backstaff, and myself, and Mr. Ferguson, we watch this very closely. And if the demand starts getting to a point, we need augmentation. We will be coming back to the board like we did about eighteen months ago when we had some savings. Rather than sweeping the savings, we came back to the board and asked, what did the board want to do with that savings? And that's how we did specialty care. So that's part of the, as you're thinking about it, if I could just leave that with you too, is that this is not, we make a reduction and that's where we're going to be throughout the year. We will monitor this line item pretty closely.
Yeah.
Because of the program is, it's fairly new. And as it's getting more and more publicity and the work that Dr. Bealson and his department are doing, there is more folks that are coming in. So this number is not a, it's a very, it's a number that's going to bounce up and down, so.
Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So I appreciate the premise that the CEO just mentioned. I get what he's saying. And I'd certainly welcome any opportunity to best understand any fluctuations in demand for services or how many clients we're able to see. I think that dashboard, quite frankly, needs to be expanded to let this board and the public fully comprehend whatever outreach or availability of information we're granting to this target population. Again, regardless of whether there's waiting lists or not, the fact of the matter is, when we first established the program, this board voted to do that, we acknowledged, because there was some research done, that the population is about ten times what we're serving now in the county. So there's no argument that there's unmet demand out there. It's about how we respond to the demand. And then later, of course, we had the conversation, rightly so, about the need for specialty care versus primary care. But I also too want to list my own preface here before we hear from Dr. Bealson. And that is, in light of where I think we all acknowledge that we're going to be next year, the following year, the year after that, in terms of the unique predicament, budgetary predicaments that we face, if this goes away this year, it's going to be much easier, I think, to look backwards next year when things are going to be, you know, noticeably even more challenging. And because we have, you know, we're only serving about a tenth of who we need to serve, to me, that marks almost a structural means of kind of putting us in a place where we can't move, where we can't even consider revisiting the restoration of these monies. That's why I think it's a very kind of precarious place that we find ourselves with regard to a very important program. So that's the preface that I'd like to offer.
Dr. Bealson?
Thanks. So let's level set a little bit. As you guys know, you increased the cap to 4,000 from the 3,000. We're now at 3770 as of today. If things continue the way that they are, by October 1st, we should be full at 4,000. You also lifted the cap completely on the age. And actually, that's been, interestingly, we look at this by specific ages. There are very few people over sixty. It's working class folks. It's overwhelmingly between thirty and fifty-five, but just for information.
So it's right in that sweet spot between what the state's going to cover and what we're already covering.
Exactly. I don't know if we want to talk about it today, about the undocumented coverage, but I'll just throw that out real quickly.
Well, we're not making a budget decision on that today.
No, you're not. Just related to the hundred patients, but anyway. So specialty care, we have budgeted 2.26 million. We're not going to spend more than 1.75 million this year. So that's the reason for the 500,000. I would argue that, if I can, that there may be a need for more coming forward for two reasons. One, we're significantly increasing the number of patients in the Healthy Partners program. And two, prior to this, it's been a very clunky system of contracting with specialists. You heard Mr. Rivera come out and talk about the need for specialty care. We now have put in place a much more agile process of contracting with specialty providers. So we have providers available at all times in many more specialties than were the case before. So it is possible that we'll be above the 1.76 next year. And you heard from the county exactly what he would consider.
I appreciate, I think you make the point better than I probably ever could, that all the more reason why I think this, it's premature to basically act to memorialize structurally a reduction in the appropriation for this program. So again, I'm very wed to the idea of keeping it where it's at. I know, I think we all agreed when we saw the initial success of this, that we'd love to see it grow. I'm being realistic and practical in the sense that I understand that that's probably not in the cards right now, but this is really about keeping our funding in place for all the various contingencies that are, or likelihoods is a better way to put it, that Dr. Bealson just mentioned.
And we'll bring back to the supervisors quarterly the report that's more broad than you, that you just requested.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item, Supervisor Natoli, you wanted to have a conversation on HOT.
Yes, and I did. And I certainly heard the comments from my colleagues on the board. And yes, the sheriff does deploy the personnel once we authorize the positions, but I guess I came out a little differently in that recognizing that, you know, you, from a budget standpoint, were looking to make sure that we didn't lose programs in their totality and trying to maintain certain service levels. And I appreciate that the sheriff worked with this, but I guess I would just say to all that, that in the event that we restored under the recommended budget, you know, three HOT team members, I don't think the sheriff's going to object to that, nor do I think it would be something that, you know, anyone would find objectionable in the sense that it would continue to bolster what we are doing out there. And I guess I just, from the perspective of what that's meant to our neighborhoods, you know, throughout the unincorporated area, and I think the work that goes on there, I think it's very important. So, you know, again, I've heard, you know, what I take to be a majority of the boards, they, you know, comfortable with letting it ride. But, you know, it's another one of those where we put those positions in place, we debated it, we've, you know, we, the board supervisors have funded them, and obviously, we have the ability to unfund it. But I think the construct that we had, and I think was one that, as we debated for several hours about what we were going to do, is we had one in the parkway and two in the neighborhoods and business districts. And I just think we're going to, you know, short ourselves a bit. And again, if that's the will of the board, you know, I'd be prepared to make a motion, but again, I'm not necessarily to force the issue. I understood what people said. But I do think that, you know, three of those positions, maintaining them would be very, very important to the cleanup, as well as to the safety, both in our neighborhoods and business districts, but also on the parkway. And I think that was the whole, that was the essence of why we, you know, put them in place to begin with. I don't know, there's other comments, but.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add too, that as I recall the conversation a couple, two and a half years back about the, what we saw as the, kind of the dynamic out in the parkway, especially the portions of the parkway that run through unincorporated areas. I think the concern, which I think we all took to heart, was that without some programming in place, some implementation of assistance from the sheriff's department, that we might move folks to the edges of the property of the parkway and therefore have impacts in the adjoining neighborhoods. Now, of course, we've got new court cases that make that much more difficult. But I do think it is kind of an integral component, part of what we deliberated at length not too long ago. And so if Supervisor Natoli is at some point making a motion, I'm willing to second it for restoration of positions.
Before Supervisor Frost, so what we're doing here really is not, I mean, budgeting or taking away positions. We're following the sheriff's lead on what he says he will take away.
That's correct.
So we do this today, that's no guarantee that we have those two HOT members.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Well, they're each $200,000 roughly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we had a commitment from the sheriff that he would maintain, I'm sorry, that he would maintain this. That was the deal with the HOT team. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, he still has that ultimate authority, but that was the, when we sat here and debated that, I think, Patrick, that, you know, he agreed, and he has maintained that as long as we funded that. Is that correct?
Until we got into the cuts.
Yeah, until we got into cuts, I mean, to the point. But if we restore that position, you know, he's not going to put this back on the arson team if we say we're going to keep the HOT team in place, right?
I did not have that conversation.
No, you didn't. I mean, I'm not, you know.
What we talked about was cuts and when he, what's he reducing and how he wants to use his resources. I'm not saying that he won't agree to it. I just said I did not have the conversation.
So is there, at least hypothetically, is there a way to, if it's the will of the board to restore some positions, to memorialize that the intent of that motion directive would be specifically for the HOT team? Do you put that in some kind of memorandum of understanding between the sheriff and the CEO, or sheriff and the board? How does that work?
Thanks, Supervisor Serna, with that one. I'm starting to wade a little bit into county council, is that, as you know, the board allocates a amount of money. At that point, it's up to the elected official on that side to take the money. And I don't believe that the board or myself, we can obligate him to put it somewhere. We had an agreement last time, was more of a verbal agreement, that that won't happen. I'm not saying that he won't agree, but that's just the nature of this in here. I think what changed this time when we were talking to him was that the magnitude of the cuts we were giving. And I do know, and I think Britt does too, that there's some other funding requests that he had, that he would have seen us fund rather than some of the other items that he was putting on the cut list. So I don't know how, what that conversation will be with him.
So basically, we'd have to take a leap of faith?
That's correct.
And you're saying we'd be funding something that wasn't at the top of his list?
Correct.
Supervisor Frost.
I have the impression that the sheriff had a plan when he suggested the cuts that he did. And he has not asked me to add more HOT, or he hasn't asked for any changes to the plan that he submitted. And I also had the impression from you, Nav, that he had a kind of a plan B, that Pop would fill in in those gaps where the HOT team, the lack of thereof might, he had a plan around it, so.
And that's what Captain Borrellji mentioned this morning. As time permits, they will bring in Pop to back up on HOT.
Supervisor Natoli.
Well, the sheriff didn't ask for the HOT teams to begin with. You know, there was an outgrowth, obviously, conversation with the sheriff and with our, you know, with our, you know, whole holster departments. And again, you know, working with the sheriff very closely. And so, you know, I don't want to mince words here, but it's, you know, and I know that he has ultimate authority. But he has maintained his commitment. I didn't get any sense, and I certainly haven't visited with him anytime recently, but that, you know, I saw what, you know, the proposed areas for reductions were. I didn't see any on the list besides what's been discussed here. And so I guess I find it a little bit alarming that if we were to, for something that was on the reduction list, and not his preference, not necessarily yours, and I get it that there was a plan if we reduced him, but if we didn't reduce it as much, and he had those officers available to do that, and...
I think, Supervisor Natoli, I want to be very, I'm not saying that's my preference or not. All I was responding to is that we can restore it. Ultimately, it is his responsibility how he deploys the money that he receives. That's all I'm reacting to. I'm not saying that he won't do it. I'm not saying that I'm for it. I'm just very technically responding to that piece.
Right. But he has honored, as would expect, and certainly, we have funded for the last two years, now going to the third year, those HOT teams. And now, you know, Phil Bresch was here this morning and responded to it. I didn't get any sense that that wasn't their priority. I get it, I didn't see a priority list, but...
But when you have a department of over $200 million and you choose to surgically go in and cut these two positions, that doesn't indicate to me a strong commitment to the program.
It was five positions.
It's five positions.
Five positions. Yes, it's five.
We were talking about two.
All right. So the last item that the board had asked for is we, and we did not have a report back. I think you all had a pretty good conversation about half year, full year, and basically then given what we're facing next year. So I was just going to turn that over to you, Chair Kennedy, on discussion on that. We're here to answer any questions. I don't know what else we can provide for you on that.
Great, I agree. Are you punched in, Don, or?
Oh, no, that was your point.
Okay, all right. So that's all of them?
That's all of them.
Okay, then I would like to take one at a time. And so we'll start with animal control, and we'll entertain a motion. And I believe that what was discussed was $68,000 for emergency vet contract, $30,000 for the Batmobile, and $110,000 for the cats' pain neuter program. That's what was discussed. Is there a motion?
And then the $70,000 that was in there on the chart?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So for a total of $254,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. He's adding.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
The, where is the money going to come from on all this?
The, what's on this sheet, 182,000, it's coming from two-year extension that we expect from, I mean, two years.
Two months. Two years, you can fund a lot with that.
Two-month extension we're going to get from them. And the 72 that we had discussion about an hour ago, that's going to come out of our reserve.
And all the rest of it, all the rest of the conversation, all these other items, where are they going to come from?
It's the same spot. We're going to go to our reserve/fund balance to take it out.
Okay.
Can we have a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Ms. Peters? And the motion fails.
Okay. APS?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I could. Then I would like to offer on that item, if I could, if people are uncomfortable with fund balance, then I would offer up that within the realm of the TOT tax and the competitive process and the discretionary process there, there's $1 million. I would ask that from the portion each district would be allocated $100,000 to designate to qualified organizations. I would ask that if you're not, if you're looking for dollars, that you could take the $100,000 or the $72,000 from District Five. You can maintain the competitive process, and I would designate, and this is important to animal welfare in this community and county, and to, I feel very strongly about that. So I would offer that. You could take it out, it zeros out on the budget. I'm completely fine with that.
But that's your prerogative anyway, isn't it?
No, it's not. Well, not in the million-dollar grants program. It's not my prerogative. I'm not talking about the community monies. I'm talking in the...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so in the grants program, you could take $72,000 out of that. You end up with $928,000, take it out of District Five.
District Five funds?
Not community monies, though, out of the TOT, the $1 million grant program. And there's $100,000 each district could designate.
That's correct. And you, as long as people apply in that process, you have the say over whether to award it to who you want. Anyway, I think Supervisor Kennedy is essentially right. You already have that ability to do that out of your $100,000, assuming they apply through the...
But this is an athlete. This is our county department. I'm just saying, move it over.
Are you asking us to dedicate our money to?
No, I'm not asking yours at all.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
I spend money on DOT all the time. I just write them a memo.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I would designate, this is not out of the community monies, out of the $100,000. This would be out of the million-dollar pot.
Supervisor Natoli, if I could offer, why don't we do this? We will give you a memo saying that the $72,000 is the restoration for these programs. And would you agree to fund that out of your $100,000? And then you can respond to us, and that becomes our document.
Okay, but be clear. Not out of the community monies, we each get a pot of community money. This is out of the $1 million pot.
Wait, the $1 million pot, there's usually 500 that goes for programs and 500 to the supervisors. Which pot are you talking about?
The supervisor, out of that pot, though, yeah.
So the 100 you get, you can spend it. Are you suggesting you would spend it?
Could I, could I maybe just recap how we use, how the TOT process goes?
Hold on, just hold on. I think I understand what you're asking for is in the TO pot, the five, there's a million dollars, 500's competitive, 500 gets divvied up, 100 hundreds, each board members.
In addition to neighborhood and community money.
No, I get it. Yeah, that's what's mixing me up. So the 100 you get out of that 500, you would like to work with us to fund 72,000 in that?
Absolutely. And you can take it out today with my vote. I mean, that way it'd be clear.
We will work with you. We'll get the paperwork ready. We'll get that, we'll get that done.
Okay.
Okay.
So it'll be funded, then? This will be funded?
Correct.
So these are restored?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Then if I could, on both APS and code, those are just directing us to add eight positions back, six positions in APS and two in code as unfunded, but they're on our books and.
So no motion necessary?
No, we do need, because we have, we had a slated for delete. We need for you to tell us not to delete.
That's what I thought. Okay. Supervisor Frost.
So the conversation has, the direction of the conversation is stating that because those are unfunded positions, it doesn't impact us. I would like you to speak to that, Britt, if you could.
So correct. So what we will do is we will add six positions, no funding behind it. We'll add two positions with no funding behind it. So we will.
What does that mean?
Basically, what that means.
Does that mean you're not going to fill those positions?
We won't be able to fill until we come back to you and show you what revenue we have.
Okay.
So we can do, we have to come back to you and have that discussion.
And this is for code and APS?
Correct.
So, so you're looking for a motion for the substance of that, but also, do you need some direction about, or some clarity about when the board expects you to come back and let us know when there's a?
I don't think, I mean, I think we understand the desire. We just need to have the positions back on the book, and then we'll have the discussion.
Okay, then the chair will make the motion to restore six unfunded positions in APS and two unfunded positions in code enforcement.
Second. It's clear those positions in APS were in public guardian, IHHS and.
Correct, that's what we discussed, so.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
So, guys, stop a minute. Healthy Partners?
CalFresh.
Oh, CalFresh, yeah. We didn't have a dollar amount when we discussed, we.
We discussed backfilling.
Yeah. Yeah, there was, I have 300K here.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's what, that's what.
That's what, yeah, we had discussed that we kind of, I didn't get an impression, what dollar amount, how long were we going? There's a suggestion made to do it for six months. Then we had a discussion about we're backfilling federal money. So I guess the question of the board is, what would you like to do?
Okay.
Do you want to backfill? Do you want to do 300, half a year? What would you like to do?
I would, I would move that we move restoration of $150,000 and that, you know, whether it was six months or for the year, depending upon what the rollout time would be, I would leave that to our DHA staff working with the partners in that regard. But that we'd fund it for $150,000 for the fiscal year, and then they can decide what's the best way to use that over the period of time.
So I'm willing to second that, but I want, I want a clear understanding that there's not going to be any intent or interest in going past the six months and getting into regular practice of backfilling the federal funding. That's, I'm hearing, that's as important to me as the fact that we're losing this, too.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so then I'll second the motion.
Okay, has everybody understand the motion?
Six months funding, $150,000, and we're not.
Not going to get in the practice.
We're not going to get in the practice of funding it in the future, backfilling funding.
And the motion carries, passes with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay, hot?
Can I say I had a?
Which one?
If you're going alphabetically, Healthy Partners.
Oh, Healthy, you're right. You threw me off on that one, sorry. Healthy Partners, half a million.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Peters?
I was on a different issue.
Oh, okay.
So what about Healthy Partners?
So, pretty, pretty.
No, no.
That was CalFresh. That was CalFresh.
Your spelling is getting us in trouble.
I feel like this has been, I think we're clear on what's in front of us either way, right? So I would, I would like to make the motion that we preserve the funding for Healthy Partners, that it come from fund balance, and that we include in any, if you want to call it dashboard or assessment of our progress in terms of the quality and quantity of service provided to a growing population, that we also include some detail about how we're, how we're doing outreach, how we're letting people know that there may be some changes. There's, there's no age cap anymore. There might be specialty services, you know, the, you know, the fact that we've reached a limit, I think that, I think some adjustment on, on the dashboard part of it's important as well. So that would be my motion.
Second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay, we had a discussion on hot, but there's not a dollar that.
And your alphabet is right back on.
I am. There you go. I knew I was back.
Can I say I had a communication with the sheriff while we were talking? From him, and he said his reinstatement priority would be for the hot team, and that's where he would, he would spend, reinstate the funded positions, although he would, it's his intention to keep them there for the foreseeable future. He doesn't want to create the expectation that they be reinstated to hot in perpetuity, given that he doesn't know what the fiscal future is for his department.
But for this year, he'd be.
This round, yes, he's in.
That's good enough for me.
Promising a year.
So I'd move restoration of three of the hot team positions.
Second.
All three vote?
Unanimous vote.
Okay, I think then we are to?
Weave.
Weave.
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for all the reasons I've previously stated, and I think we've heard in better detail than I could provide from the executive director how important this program is, I think with a clear understanding that we may be facing the, you know, the real prospect of the absence of funding next year, the full funding of 150, which I'm moving, gives weave at least that year's time to figure out different fundraising strategies and whatnot to make sure that the service goes on uninterrupted. That's my motion.
Chair will second and make the comment that I would have rather have done 75, but, you know, there's no question the value of the program and the need of it in the community. And I also am swayed by the conversation that I had with the executive director in which she made it very clear to me that she is very much in the understanding that with our budgets that are coming in the future, that diversification of her funding is important, and she, she understands that, so I second the motion. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
So Chair Kennedy, there's one item we do need to go back, which is in the memo we had given you on animal care.
Mm-hmm.
There's a restoration of 182,000 from Elk Grove revenue. So when we did the motion, it got bundled up with fund balance and that. If I could ask for a vote on 182,000, if the board is okay with us restoring that piece?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, we got all the outliers taken care of. Now, Ms. Peters?
We're not doing IHH, we're going to finish the budget first and do them later?
We're going to finish the budget, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Because we have to, that's a different authority.
Okay, just.
We have a slide.
Yeah, if you pull up the slides for my exclusions.
Okay, let me double, make sure they got the right one up.
Just three pages.
Okay.
Okay, I would move that we adopt the budget minus the exclusions that are being shown. Several pages, I only see one page right now.
Can you please, they're moving it.
Okay. Plus the additions we just voted on.
Second.
Thank you. Need to get the third page up there.
It's two of the two.
Two of the two, there's CIP coming next.
There's CIP.
Oh.
Unanimous vote.
Could you show the third page, please?
One more item before we get off the operating budget is to direct Department of Personnel Services to prepare an administrative SRA to reflect the positions approved by fiscal year 1920, recommended budget, including any deletion of positions with the amendment that we made for the six positions.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Now CIP. Can you please bring that slide?
That's not the CIP. They're getting it up, okay. I have it here, Flo. There we go. Okay, so I'd move the CIP minus the exclusions on this page.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And I will make the motion to, don't, we need to move the remainder of the budget? Yes.
Correct.
The look on my face.
Yeah. I make the motion to approve the remainder of the budget.
As it's been amended.
Mr. Chair, if I could, so is it clear then, as it relates to the animal care budget, that the 72,000, does that need any board clarification?
We're very clear on that.
Okay, all right. So that's included, okay, thanks.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing.
And I will make the motion to move the CIP. The remainder.
No, but I, there were five or six I excluded.
Did I include ABC, too? Did I include ABC?
Yeah.
Let me clear this out really quick, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay, and I have.
One more item is to approve the technology improvement plan.
Okay. Move the technology improvement plan.
Second.
That was a good presentation Rami did today.
Unanimous vote.
I do have one comment to make for September. One additional comment is you called out under Supervisor Nataoli's direction, the funds that come, they're a small amount of funds, but funds that come from the electronic billboard. For September, I would like to consider that $55,000 of that, again, small amount compared to everything else we've talked about today, to restore the homeless navigator on the floor and Mack Road corridors. That has been the most successful navigator in the system, placing approximately 10 people in housing every month, which comes out to less than $450 per person placed in housing, which is phenomenal success. Unfortunately, Sacramento Steps Forward is not going to be funding them anymore. We funded them originally, then Steps Forward took it over. Now I'd like to fill that gap, but that can come September.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
So there won't be any gap in service? They're not going to fund it. Will you be funded through September? Does it end July 1st?
We're going to, I'm working on a bridge.
Okay, yeah, because that makes sense. That was geographically directed anyway, so.
The funding for that navigator is in my budget, and it is funded.
It is?
Yes.
They're not aware of that?
We've had conversations with them, but we will talk with them again.
And if you could contact the Mack Road Partnership as well, that would be very helpful.
You'd be their hero.
The amount of letters we're getting.
Okay. It was originally on the list, but then we took it off, so it's, it is funded.
Okay, thank you, Ann. I'd like to move to give Ann a raise.
She seconded that motion.
$55,000, I think I heard you say.
For six months?
For six months?
Okay, now.
I think we're at the IHSS and then final comments.
Yes. IHSS. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, sure.
Public authority.
Okay, item one is you're acting as the in-home supportive services public authority, and this is on the IHSS public authority fiscal year 2019 recommended budget.
Hi, my name is John Kazitsa. I'm the executive director for the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. Today, I am here to seek your approval for the fiscal year 1920 public authority budget recommended on the amount of $2,025,063. Our operating budget this year is $442,661 lower than last year's 1819 budget, and it also includes $88,816 using, use of fund balance, available fund balance. Reductions were needed primarily due to the increases in costs related to the COLAs and benefits for existing staff, as well as reductions of the 91 realignment, realignment funding. Fiscal year 1920 budget includes establishing a reserve account, which is comprised of previous year's fund balance and a trust fund transfer into the available fund balance. An evaluation of the best use and most appropriate, best and most appropriate use of this reserve will be conducted between now and September's budget hearings. At this point, I'd like to request that your board adopt the fiscal year 1920 recommended budget as identified on attachment A, and approve the authorizations to enter into the continuing revenue and service agreements needed to meet the public authority mandates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Nope.
We now know how many there are.
Yeah. I would move the item, and thanks, John, for staying with us all day long, so.
Not a problem.
Back to cleanup.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
With that, I want to say thank you to all of you in the audience, and for all the hard work that you did, not just for this budget, but the other 364 days a year. We appreciate all of your work. This is a fantastic county, but it's a fantastic county not because of the five of us, but because of all of you. So thank you very much, and please take that message back to your employees.
Supervisor Kennedy, if I just could, would like to echo that this has been a, one of the hardest budgets for us to do. We knew the magnitude that was staring at us. We know there's more coming, but I want to thank all the departments and the dedication that they put in here.[1709.04]